All right, good afternoon, everybody. What do we get started on the public safety meeting? Today is November seventeenth, the current time is one oh four. And I'm commuting into session the Springfield Subcommittee, Public Safety Subcommittee meeting. Today, we are joined by Lieutenant, SPD Lieutenant Tashina. Good afternoon, sir. Thank you for joining us, sir.
Good morning.
Good afternoon. Deputy Kent, good afternoon, deputy. So it was good to talk to you, sir. Attorney Shay, thank you for joining us. Attorney Breck, good afternoon. I'm also joined by my colleagues, Councilor Guan, Councilor Tim Allen, Councilor Maria Perez, Councilor Click Bruce, and I do have, I believe, Amy Dunford, I believe she's a resident. And of course, to the, to the media, to the body media for joining us, Western Mass News and NRP, Paul Todd Hilt. Thank you, everybody. So just to make sure again, everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Just to make a quick comment, anybody who joins, please make sure that you are identified for security reasons. We need to have everybody identify in the meeting. So today's agenda, I call this meeting to discuss two items we have in agenda today. One is the new proposed use of four policy, proposed use of four policy, and the current status of the crisis intervention program. The Superintendent Club did email me stating that that policy was still on the review phase, on the input phase, which is good. But I still think that we can still have a conversation about it and get the conversation started. If you allow me first, I will however, indulge into starting with the crisis intervention itself. I don't know if the lieutenant or deputy would like to either one, which ones could speak on that issue. But it is my understanding, talking about item two, the crisis intervention, that unfortunately is not in operation. Is that correct?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, that will be Lieutenant, Lieutenant Sheen, go ahead, sir.
So the BHN co-clinician response is what I believe you're speaking of, where we have clinicians respond to crises. And it is actually, as of last week, it was re-initiated, where they're actually responding to the calls in real time with basing themselves out of the metro unit, having handheld radio units assigned to them so they can get the calls in real time, instead of having to have the officers contact the emergency or the non-emergency BHN response number and have a clinician respond to that. And that was approximately maybe two months where we weren't operating that way. And that was basically, we were awaiting a grant to be submitted for, to the Department of Mental Health. And the grant was for co-clinicians to be funded by the Department of Mental Health. We just submitted that grant on August thirty first, and it was received and went through the process through the Department of Mental Health. And as of last Monday, we received an email from John Barber and had a conversation with them, Director John Barber from the Department of Mental Health, where there's four points of negotiation that they need to resolve before they approve it. They, they did tentatively approve funding, full-time funding for three clinicians through BHN, the Behavioral Health Network. And those clinicians would be funded and their support system financially supported through certain amount of funding through the Department of Mental Health, through the Springfield Police Department and given to BHN. And that would provide full-time coverage for all three shifts for at least one clinician. That, that was still pending acceptance with the, with responding to these. And they're very, very straightforward questions, just a more of, a little bit more detail and certainty. They're looking for pie charts as far as when the most active times where they think that these clinicians may be more effective. So it might not necessarily be one-on-one shift, each shift, but there might be overlapping shifts if it shows that the need is for, you know, maybe double coverage from four in the afternoon to eight in the evening. So there's, you know, that's, that's what I think they're looking for there, where they can most effectively apply the resources that they're providing to BHN through the funding. And some other just issues as far as where the future of the program is going to head. Right now, the only actual co-write-alongs that we engage in right now, when we do the Project Hope details, where we go out and we engage the homeless community. And we, we usually have the clinicians with us because in conjunction with homeless lists, there's a lot of mental health issues. So we like to provide them with an opportunity to maybe solve some of those issues. That's a separate grant, that Project Hope grant. There's possibly some other means that we can do this. They like, it's a co-write, and it's, the Department of Mental Health is big on this, this model. And it's something that, at this point in time, we're trying to, it's due to staffing and everything. It's almost impossible to do unless it's on some sort of different basis or different format. So we're, we're trying to work with the DMH on that and how we can get that forward and, and explain our situation as far as just personnel-wise, we just have, it's a tough, it's a tough one to do. So once we get those responses back to them, they will go through their process again. We should hear something within a couple of weeks as far as finalizing of those three positions. In the meantime, with the notification that things were back to, you know, that BHN was, or Department of Mental Health, received the submission of the grant from Springfield on a good faith basis. BHN responded by putting the clinicians back into their former roles that they had, which is once again, operating out of the metro unit office, being, being supplied with radios to, to provide that real response time. So if there's a, a call for a BHN clinician, the officers will have gone, settle the scene, make sure it's safe. And they'll request the clinician or the clinician, maybe already hearing the call in progress, already starts her way to there. Once the scene is secure, then they, they'll go right there. So it's, it's a, it's a faster response time to help calm the situation and try and provide the services that might be needed.
Right, right. Thank you, Lieutenant, for that overview. Before I would go on, I'd like to recognize Counselor Justin Hurst, who just joined us. Welcome, Counselor Hurst. Lieutenant, I do have a few questions that I'm going to pass it on to my colleagues for any follow-up questions. But Lieutenant, let me, let me start off by saying that, at least in my opinion, the BHN Crisis Response Team, it's a model that I've seen in myself work. It's a model that I hope, sir, that we can keep it as a permanent fixture here in the city. I've seen it. It allocates, it, our resources better. Manpower, it keeps the cost down, it relieves the pressure in the hospitals. We all know at some of your local hospitals, you could wait sixteen hours easily in the waiting room. So it would take a lot of pressure there. And I know there has been other ideas. So there, such, so here you talk about creating an emergency room site crisis that has been discussed in the past, kind of like in the drawing board. So but in the meantime, I think this is a good thing. I would love to see it a permanent fixture. But with that being said, so let me ask you some basic questions. So am I to understand that we were without crisis response for two months?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. And this grant, how much you see for and when does it expire?
It's a rolling grant, so there's, it has to yearly based on when it gets submitted initially. And if there's other needs that arise, they can be added during the course of the implementation of the, of the grant. Now, the grant itself. Let me go to the.
Sure, take your time.
So it's roughly a five hun- or five hundred thousand dollar grant. And that's, that includes clinicians, administrative fees, equipment, laptops, bulletproof vests, other, other items that they need. Mileage for clinicians, vehicles and such. So it's approximately one half, half a million dollars.
Is a, is a bulletproof vest for the clinicians?
That, that they would need that, that, yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. I totally agree with that. I consider you for it. So Lieutenant, and what will be the city, the city portion? Is the city pitching anything in or no?
The city portion of this, at this time is there, that would provide for the, the salary for three clinicians. So if there was a need for more clinicians, I guess negotiations would have to be made with BHN to see what they'd be willing to provide and above, above and beyond the three clinicians. Or if Springfield needed more, if they would be willing to provide more funding to have those clinicians. So that's a little bit out of my realm at this point.
No, I understand. But basically, if I understood correctly, the answer to my question is the city is not providing any money for, for this program. It's a state.
No.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I would love to, you know, just a quick observation. I think that we need to talk later, at some point, talk about how do we create a mechanism not to allow this to expire, whether it is, you know, just identifying financial lines that we can cover this, because two months is a long time.
Yeah, and that was, and that was unexpected at this point in time. This, funding this grant that just came out was something that was new to the city and to other surrounding cities. And it was, this is the first time that applied for it because it didn't exist before. My understanding. So once we put in for it, which was, you know, was a complex process. It's a grant that we hadn't put in before, for, so there was no, no base or no, no guidelines or, or go-bys to utilize, to submit it. So once we have the, the initial submission, it's going to be much easier. And then we'll determine that there's a greater need for more clinicians. We can justify it. Maybe the grant next year would show that, yeah, we need another clinician. And the Department of Mental Health might fund it. Or they might say, well, really doesn't show the need for this amount. Maybe we'll take us position away. So it's, it's a fluid grant. And the, you know, I don't, I don't, I think the, just the initial startup and the, of this first grant was what happened. And, and in the end, and I, and I won't speak for BHN, but I think it was just basically that, to my understanding, the clinicians that they had dedicated solely to Springfield was prohibiting them from fully utilizing their potential at BHN.
Right. If I may, Lieutenant, that was my other, my other question. You just spoke to it. These three clinicians are going to be dedicated to Springfield or are going to be shared throughout the region?
No, they're dedicated to Springfield.
Okay, that's good news. That's very good news. I'm glad to hear that.
And they're going to be operating out of Springfield, the metro unit. And this is, this is one thing that I, I guess is underappreciated because it's, it's not a funded thing through the city. But the metro officers that are working here and then officers that have gone to the Crisis Intervention Team Training, the work that they do when the clinicians aren't available or with work that they've done with clinicians, follow-up work, going to these places where they already know the issues, utilizing the training that they have. So there is input, there's a lot more going on, on the, on the ground level with the Springfield Police Department and utilizing the training and their experiences with the co-response that provides a, a, a great service to this community.
Got you. Thank you, Lieutenant. I'm going to turn it over, see some council have their hands up. But just a quick comment before I turn it over. This is great news that the three clinicians are going to be dedicated to Springfield. I know it's easier said than done. But as we all know, the holidays are coming, Christmas is coming. We all know during that time, the psych and behavioral calls increased drastically. A lot of depression, a lot of anxiety, a lot of family issues. So it will be my hope that hopefully we can augment them somehow during the holiday season. So, but good. Thank you, Lieutenant, for that overview. Turn that over to my colleagues now. Counselor Guan, ma'am, do you have a question?
Thank you very much. Yes. And thank you for hosting this meeting. This is a very important topic. And thank you for, Lieutenant Shay, for being here. So first of all, my first question would be, prior to getting this grant, because you all have been doing this for a while now, I believe, having clinicians go out with the police officers through BHN. Was BHN funding those positions at that time?
Yes, BHN had done that as part of a program that was initiated by Sergeant Brian, now Lieutenant Brian Elliott at this metro unit. And they created a working relationship with BHN. But BHN, once again, was funding their own clinicians to stay here full-time in Springfield. And it became noticeable that there was, there was some downtime. And you have a clinician that can't take care of other issues. And, and it was a losing proposition, as I guess is running a business, it's not, not a good business model. So once again, this grant became available this spring. We started working on it very early. There were some bumps in the road as far as getting the grant submitted. Once we did get it submitted, BHN on a good faith basis, put those clinicians back. And they're still not being funded at this point that grant is approved. So it's, it's a very important gesture that they did to have them, knowing that it's a losing business proposition. But they, they want to do this out of a good faith commitment to the city.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I think that we need to make sure that BHN gets their proper due because they have been doing this for a while. And I think it's an excellent model that I'm, I'm really glad the police department is interested in continuing. So throughout that time, I don't know if you have any numbers or maybe if BHN does of the number of calls that were made during what shifts? Because I agree, you know, having one clinician on each shift may be a waste of time for some of that time because you might not get a call at all, or you might get two or three calls in an hour. And then only one clinician can respond. So I don't know if you, or anyone else might have any numbers regarding that and how that has been? Because they've been doing it for a while now, from my understanding.
Yes, actual numbers in front of me. No, one of the points of negotiation that was submitted from the Department of Mental Health was to have those numbers so they will be able to figure out what the best time to utilize it is. We're working with this group out in Western or Eastern Mass called the Advocates Group. And they're very similar to BHN, but they have a funded position where they're actually, they crunch the numbers for the departments. So we're in touch with an individual out there that we hope is going to be able to provide all the numbers that are being looked for to make these decisions. And through our dispatch and through our crime analysis unit, we can either supply them with the, the, the information and they can crunch the numbers. Or we can have our crime analysis unit do it itself. But I'm not sure if it's going to fit the, the response that Department of Mental Health actually wants. So we're, we're trying to get together with the advocates rep to straighten that out. But once this is less than, almost a little bit more than a week that we've received this information, we're just, you know, logistics touch.
I understand that. And I thank you so much for that also. I know that right now, BHN did get a really major grant to have the community mental health, behavioral health clinics in their offices. And I think another agency got them as well. So I'm just wondering if this collaboration, and you probably don't know the answer to this. I'm just, I guess I'm excited to see what the results of that are with having a community behavioral health clinic, which is an urgent care, kind of like a mental health clinic, as well as the response that you all and the clinicians are doing at the same time. So those are my questions of Chairman Davila. And again, I thank you. And I think that we need to really thank BHN for having done the work that they did over the last few years regarding this.
Yeah, the, one other thing I'd like to add is that the, and going forward in January, I think that's when that next phase will kick in. Based out of the living room, and we'll be able to divert people that, instead of taking to the hospitals, where you can, either as officers drop them off or we'll get people to the living room where they can be seen by clinicians and not clog up the, the hospital room.
Yeah, that's exciting.
So that's, that's going to be a great option to have.
It is. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Guan. Counselor Perez.
Thank you, everyone. And I think this is a very important meeting. And just for the purpose of informing the community, what is the process and how is it determined if an alleged suspect is in need of the services?
Counselor Perez, would you mind restate, re-stating your question?
Yes, for the purpose of educating the community, how is it that the alleged suspect is determined when it comes to the process that is in need of this type of services? And I reflect back on the history, what happened in Armory Street, is the family could call in, what's the process?
Lieutenant?
So I, I'm, to my understanding of this question is, is there a way that there's information that's relayed to officers responding to a scene? So we can possibly make a determination if there's some sort of mental health history? Well, the, the information that officers are provided usually comes through dispatch. And if there's information that would indicate that there's a hazard, individuals violent, if there's a health hazard, that would tend to fall in there. But not all information like that might not get into that record. There's also information that'd be available in our in-house records tracking system where we'd have encounters with individual. And there might be reports filed and for previous interactions, whether there be arrests, report taken for being a victim or for just field interviews where officers are engaged in, you know, assisting ambulances for, for mental health issues. Those are things that could be in there. Are they always in there? I, it's, I, I couldn't answer that one if, you know, if it's, you, you try and put all the best information you can into the system. And if everybody's doing their job, it should be there. But then it also takes the ability to sometimes extract that information as an officer when you go in there. Is there a alert system, use caution, subject maybe? Yes, we do have that in place for certain individuals who are known to be dangerous. And our tech, our crime analysis crew is very good at, if they determine that somebody has a past history of firearms violence and such, they will put that out, or announce it to the dispatcher to the vehicles responding to the scene.
Thank you. Thank you, fair person.
Thank you, Counselor Perez. I do believe, Counselor Guan, you have a follow-up question?
I just, I just, I just wanted to respond to that a little bit. And I'm not sure if this is going to change. But I know the BHN did say that they were going to, they have a dedicated number that they can call. Of course, you have crisis phone number you can call. But I believe that there's another, a dedicated number that you can call. When you call crisis at the crisis number, which is seven three three six 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 one, crisis determines whether a police officer needs to come in, you know, or if they need to get assistance from the police. This program here, I think, the family would call or maybe the individual might call. And they might say, you know, I'm, I'm going to hurt myself or I'm going to hurt someone. And it could be a mental health response. And of course, the, the police department do have to respond and make sure of safety. But I think that BHN is doing a campaign to get those numbers out to the community. I think we need to do everything we can to make sure that they know it. That's a great question, counselor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Very well. Counselor Guan, if I may, is that, is that number available on three one one if somebody calls?
I'm not sure if three one one has that number. I would, I hope that they do. I know that if you call two one one, the United Way, kind of like information line, they do have it. But I really would, I think that's a great idea. If they don't have it, Counselor Davila, that it should have a crisis phone number.
I'm going to follow up with Roy to ask. So would, would you mind, Counselor Guan, re-stating that number again?
Yes, it is local, four one three seven three three six 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 one.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor Guan. Anybody else has any more questions on this particular issue before we move on to the next issue, the next agenda item? Lieutenant Sheen, is there anything you want to add to the, to the, to the, to the item that we have not discussed, anything you want to wrap up with?
So. There, well, there, there is training that I'm actually in attendance this week at the BHN and it's the Crisis Intervention Team Training. And it's something that, at the public, I mentioned it to Nicola Howe, the director of that program, that I was going to be attending this meeting. And I suggested or asked if it would be possible to maybe have one of the counselors come down and, and maybe do an overview of the class, just sit back and observe. And she was more than receptive to the idea, or even possibly taking one of the one-day courses or forty-hour courses, being in, you know, the, the Public Safety Committee. It might be something that you could get a whole perspective on what they have down there.
Yeah, if you send me a, a link on that, if you email me something, I will have to follow up with you and share with the other committee members and the council as a whole. As I mentioned, Lieutenant, this is a great program. I've seen it work myself. You know, I just, I would love to follow up and identify ways to ensure that there's no gap in between. Two months is a long time. I think we agree with that. There should be automatic funding thing that it should automatically just, you know, is covered. So, and again, my suggestion would be, Lieutenant, that with the holidays coming, with Christmas coming, where we're seeing increase of behavioral psychiatric calls, that we can augment the staff. And because one person during the month of December is not going to be enough. They're going to be running.
And I just, I just may want to say that during that two months, we did, BHN still did respond to calls. It just wasn't through the same mechanism. There was a, a number that was able, officers could call that number and get in contact with BHN. And then BHN would do the dispatching to that particular. So there was coverage, but when they weren't being called there, they were also being used in other locations and such. They weren't, they weren't dedicated per se. So this is, you know, we get a call, they're going to be there, and there's not going to be a delay in their, in their indirect communication through the use of the department radios.
Very well. Well, thank you, Lieutenant, for that. Thank you so much. Very well. Moving on to the next agenda item, discussion of the use of policy force. Just to give a quick overview, this is, as a result of the consent decree, decree with the Department of Justice. And I know there's a few policies that are being updated. And so I would love to hear kind of an overview, a rough overview, what that is, what entitles, what the process is like, and who's going to give the final approval on this as well. So is something either for Deputy Ken or yourself, Lieutenant Sheen, or who wants to jump on this?
I'll, I'll be willing to jump in on this. I'm on the review committee. So I've been actively involved with the drafting of these policies and the reworking of some of them. And currently, as you said, it's still, right now, it's in review. It was just out for public comments and it's since come back for the review of those comments. And the process prior to that, there's a lot of back and forth between the DOJ, the city lawyers, law department, and making sure that the language in it was, was congruent, that it worked together because that, that seemed to be a lot of the, the conflicts in the, in the policies were just conflicting language, the very minor in a way, but also very important because you have to get it right. And there was, there was a lot of back and forth on that. So right now, it's, it's, like I said, it's out of the public comment phase. They're going to review the comments and then it's going to be submitted to the DOJ and the compliance team are in agreement with the policy that was currently submitted out there for review. And they're moving forward for there and also meets mass law, MPTC requirements and the new reform legislation requirements in the states. So it's, it's hitting all the points. Uh, in the state, so it's it's hitting all the points it needs to hit. It's just, it's a. It's a, it's a work in progress when they put it together because it's, it's not a one shot deal. There's a lot of back and forth. A- as far as the language is concerned, but. So that's where, that's where we stand with with it right now, and there's not much more I can offer up on on the um. On the policy itself.
Uh, Lieutenant, before I forget, would you be able to uh email a copy of that policy to an entire council, please? I think you're muted, Lieutenant.
I'll I'll forward that request to Captain Bellevue. He's in charge of of the um. Uh, policy um review or policy procedure, uh, and I would have to forward that to him.
Okay, yeah, so you could send it to the entire council for for their review accordingly. I know it's out in the paper. Uh, but I think uh all of us should have a copy just so that we can take a look.
Yeah, I I did look for it today on the um, the city website and I could not find it. Uh, so it's probably been withdrawn unless I didn't go to the right location, so um, we would love, we'll try and get you a copy of that.
Very well. Now, Lieutenant, um.
Counselor Davila, if if it's, if it's helpful at all, um, I'm also on the team. Working um with the Department of Justice and the compliance evaluators. And I'm here today um subbing for Judge Payne, who's um conducting depositions. For the rest of the day, so I, he um sends his regrets, but if I can be of help at all as well. There actually, I was talking with Captain Bellevue earlier today. Who's, he's pretty much the captain in charge of the policy. Um, development for the consent decree. Along with the of his team, um, in he, the way it's explained is there are a total of five. Use of separate use of force policies. Um, the first one that Lieutenant Sheen spoke of is the use of force policy. Um, the, the first one, um, if there are. The next four are the use of force reporting policy. The use of force review and investigation policy. The use of force foot pursuit. Policy and the use of force vehicle policy. Which are those last four in various stages of review at the moment.
Right, would you mind, would you mind, uh, uh, Attorney Brad, I thank you for for the overview. Would you mind restating just again, uh, use of force?
So the 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 first one is use of force.
Uh huh.
The second one is use of force reporting.
Correct.
The third is the use of force review and investigation.
Mm-hmm.
The fourth is use of force foot pursuit.
Mm-hmm.
And the fifth is use of force vehicle pursuit.
Very well. So, so that, uh, the one I I just made a request to the lieutenant. So which one we were getting, we're getting all five or just a use for policy?
Um, the one that Lieutenant Sheen was mentioning, that would ju- just be the one. Because the rest are still in the review stages between the Department of Justice and the Compliance Evaluator Team.
Okay.
That first one has been through that review pr- process and has already had public comment, but we have to wait on the rest. Um, you know, they will be posted for public comment once it's gone through the. Uh, review process at the Department of Justice and the Compliance Evaluator Team. Then, once it goes out for public comment, then everybody will review the public comments and go through another review process.
Very well. Now, Attorney Bragg, uh, thank you for 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 filling in for for uh solicitor pain. Can you give me the key points for the use of policy force? Uh, for example, I do believe I. Uh, when I looked at it, I believe there is, uh, the officers are to, uh, always try. Attempt to deescalate the situation first. If I'm not mistaken, uh, which I believe it's should be standard policy. Um, the use of head strikes are forbidden, I believe, the neck. Uh, chokeholds, can you walk me through the major points? If you.
I am, I actually am not that, I'm I'm not, um. I don't have a command of of all the policy. I don't know if Lieutenant Chan can, but you know, I do have it in front of me. Um, it is, and I I was told that it is on the police department's website. Um, Lieutenant, I'm not sure, but it, I mean, uh, there are definitions. There's a, you know, there's an introduction, there are definitions of all the different keywords.
Right.
There's. Let's see, there's um definitions, for example, of de-escalation, de-escalation techniques. Um, intervention.
Mm-hmm.
And but it's apparently lengthy policy, and I apologize, I just don't. I haven't have it memorized.
Yep. Lieutenant, you wanna chime in? Sure, Lieutenant, could you chime in?
Yeah, though, as uh Attorney Breck was saying, it's it's very complicated. I I I don't wanna mangle it and uh. Say something that would necessarily be correct, um, without having. Everything directly in front of me here for that.
I understand.
And uh, but if if it was on the uh Springfield website, I wasn't able to find it, but if. You you could just read it.
Wait, I I uh, as I said, I I uh, I know I I I looked through it briefly. Uh, but Lieutenant, one thing is that also, uh, to be fair, that I I I am anxious to know is, I guess my hope. That there's some kind of mechanism or or language. Uh, for the regular uh foot patrol officer, for the regular guy. Who under the circumstances does what he needs to do to go home alive. Uh, you know, that's, to me, that's not. Accessive force, you know, you need to go home alive, so. Uh, I hope that there's some language within that that will kind of spell that out as well. Because the other day, Lieutenant, I think you all agree with me. I'm going home in one piece.
The policy is um is well thought out. It's, it it addresses a lot of concerns from the citizens and it does address uh police safety also.
Okay, I I I I am anxious to uh to look at the finer details, but I do believe, um, Councilor Gobain, ma'am, you have, excuse me, Councilor Perez, you have a question?
Yes, I do, um. When it comes to the policy, I have a question. Um, it's gonna be up in the website and it said when it comes to the language in Spanish as well. I think it's very important. Um, that uh be written in both language. Um, so for the purpose of the community.
That's a great point.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, is that something that could be done, uh, Lieutenant?
I would defer to the law department on that, and like I said, I wasn't able to uh pull it up online, so I'm not sure if it is or not. Um, Kathy, do you know if it's bilingual?
I don't know if it's posted as such, but I can definitely look into that and get back to you.
Thank you. That will be, uh, I think that's a great idea, uh, Councilor Perez and uh Attorney Breck, if you could just follow with me on that as well. Uh, so. Uh, does anybody else have any questions in the uh? On this particular issue, um. No, okay, now, uh. So it just came back, when should we expect the review process to finish?
Do you mean the policy reviews?
The policy review, yes.
Uh, well, there are multiple, multiple policies, um, in addition to the use of horse policies, and we have this, um. I don't know what you'd call it, benchmark, uh, Excel spreadsheet that goes on by twenty columns. Um, so I, so some of them, you know, they're kind of in a rolling process with the use of force policies coming first. And then we have multiple policies that will follow along, so. I I I did hear from uh Captain Bellevue that the. Remender of the the four remaining use of force policies, we're hoping to get. Um, those out for review by December fifth. And then it would take, um, you know, the D O J, the compliance evaluator. Um. Their comments and then put it out for public comment, so I'm. Um, so that's moving along pretty quickly, and then we have other policies that follow. It's kind of like a rolling process. So, um, it will go on for some period of time.
Well, you don't know how long.
I, you know, I I don't, um, m- my role in this is focused on a very, um. Minute section of it, and so I haven't been um looking at all the deadlines, but it goes out for. Um, quite a period of time, the um. You know, the the consent decree is a three year agreement. Um, and and it has specific deadlines for different things that are happening at different times. I just don't have them memorized.
Okay, and the uh, the same thing will be applied by the kind of test would be the same thing will apply for the actual use of four policy, right? Even though it came back for um residents with uh for the review of residents. Uh, comments, do you know when that particular one section of the policies might be online?
Well, it's uh, it's on- online already. Um, now, as far as I know, that's still there, um, and then the the public comments that came in. Are being reviewed by the city of the Department of Justice and the Compliance Evaluator Team. To see if we need to make some modifications to the policies. I just don't know how long that process will take.
Yeah, okay.
I would imagine within, you know, a few month, you know, months at the most.
Got you, okay. I do have one final question. I don't, I don't know if my colleagues have a question. That they would like to interject now before we move on. No, okay. So Kathy, uh, Attorney Bragg, this question is for you, seeing that you are uh better off for the solicitor. And this is one of the things that, um. As I stated publicly in the past, I'm frustrated with this particular section. My understanding is that the police commission have no, have not been providing any input on this, correct?
Um, would you mind repeating that? I don't, I don't have the best volume on my computer.
My understanding is that the police commission have not been at the table with regards to these policies. That's correct.
I'm not, when you, I'm not sure what you mean by at the table.
So who who sat, who who sat at the table creating this policy?
The Board of, well, for one thing, the Board of Commissioner, the Board of Police Commissioners, um. For example, uh, Chairman Birdy was on a call with us the, just the other day, and and Mr. Tringizi. Ran a call with us just the other day when we were talking about the policies and the best way to develop community input and the ways to get. Um, community focus on the policies and they were participating in that meeting, um. So, but the the. You know, the day to day work of drafting and evaluating and editing is being done by staff. Um, not the Board of Police Commissioners, but they're certainly going to be involved in rolling out the policies to the, to the public and the community.
Right, I know, I understand, I understand the drafting and the typing and all that to be detailed today, but. Who actually sat down and said, this is gonna be done this way, this way, this way?
If you, if you mean in terms of negotiating the this settlement agreement, I.
Well, not negotiating, but but uh, like the actual policy itself, and I know the D O J is at the table. And I know that somebody from the police department is at the table. So who else? And solicitor, I believe the solicitor or your office itself, uh, is at the table, so. Is anybody missing at the table?
Uh, that's not a really, it's not a legal question. I can't really answer that, but um. They are, the the Board of Police Commissioners is aware of the policies. Um, they, you know, the way the settlement agreement is crafted, it's not something that they're, you know, i- in terms of the drafting. They're not drafting the policies, but they're certainly will be reviewing them.
So you answer, you're asking my question that they're not drafting the questions, so.
It's not their role too.
Yeah, yeah, it's usually, it's hard sometimes, uh, asking questions to a lawyer, because. You know, differentiating between what's legal question is not, it's not as easy as understood, at least to some of us, uh, so. Uh. So once this is settled, who's going to approve the policies?
Once the policies have been approved by the city, the Department of Justice and the Compliance Evaluator Teams. Uh, understanding that public comment has been ha- um, you know. Provided and everyone's in agreement of of any modifications that are needed.
Right.
Um, then, once those policies are fully approved, that then they would go into effect. But they need to be signed off by by all those, by all those parties.
And that will be police, D O J, that's it?
And the compliance evaluator.
The compliance evaluator, and where do we leave the police commission?
They're part of the city, the city. The city portion.
So is this going to be presented in front of the police commission for their approval?
Well, remember that there are a number of different kinds of policies. In fact, there's, there's our policies regarding the. Um, there are different policies involving the Board of Police Commissioners, so there will certainly be involved in those. We're just getting a little bit beyond my level of detailed knowledge, sorry.
Attorney Bragg, I think you're doing a fantastic job of my questions.
And for example, Ja- uh, Judge.
Yeah, I.
Judge Payne is working on, there's, the settlement agreement requires a manual for the Board of Police Commissioners. And so they're gonna be involved in the development of the of the manual and any policies related to that, so, yeah.
Right, well, Attorney Bragg, I I uh, you're such a lady on this call, and I thank you for. And as I stated at the beginning of this, uh, this is one of my frustrations, and you can see it by my face, Attorney Brad, because, uh. I, um. I don't know, I'm getting a funny feeling that the police commission is gonna be left out and not proven this, and I think that, as I stated before publicly. Police Commission has the ultimate authority in the police department. And I am very concerned that they are not going, there may not be approving something that is going to be used. It'd be the policy of the police department. To me, that makes no sense. I'm not saying that's what you're saying, Attorney. But that's what I'm. Actually, in fact, I think that's what you said publicly before some of the meetings, uh, and so, nobody. Uh, and so. Again, I'm concerned, uh, it is my hope that nobody's trying to circumvent the law of the city of Springfield. Uh, so, but we will see what happens with this, uh, we're gonna keep this on the radar. Uh, I I do know you guys are doing your best, uh, but again, um. The police commission, whether people like it or not, it is, uh, it is a reality is here. And so, um, we're gonna be continuing to monitor that.
And and they will, they will be involved in the policies that involve discipline and the um. And the Board of Police Commissioners.
No, I understand that, but I I I don't want them, I don't want them involved sitting at the corner. They need to be at the table. Uh, and I don't think that's, you know, uh, like you say, this is going a little more into the scope and even the political side. Uh, which is not really your 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 position, uh, or your place, but, um. Uh, and again, I'm publicly making it known that I'm concerned, uh, you know, I know you guys are doing the best in the police department. But, um, I I I just find a little cuteness going on here, uh, nobody, Attorney Bragg. Uh, but, uh, I am concerned, I am very concerned. Uh, so, uh, Attorney Bragg, I will, uh, or Lieutenant, if either one of you have anything else you want to chime in? Anything that you wanna give the people to know with regards to the, either the use of force policy or the uh crisis intervention? Uh, the flow is yours.
I know, I believe I'm, uh, I've spoken to the best of my ability as far as the, uh. Um, behavioral health crisis that's going on in the city and the, and the response that we have.
Right.
I appreciate your views the same as mine. I wanna keep this going in the right direction and.
Yeah.
Expand it as mo- much as possible to, uh, but that's, you know, that's, uh, something I think we all want. Everybody wants, uh. Uh, better, uh, solve this problem in a better way.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Attorney Bragg, anything you wanna add?
Um, I just, if if the city councillors have any suggestions of ways that we can better. Um, disseminate the policies to your constituents, to your, um. You know, members of the community, because we really want public comment, that we'd be, love to get the, any. Um, suggestions, that would be very helpful.
Thank you, Attorney, uh, Bragg. Thank you, Attorney Breck. Uh, do any of my colleagues have any questions? No, very well, but with that being said, uh, I will be scheduling another meeting, uh. Maybe mid-December, uh. To see where we are on, on this particular issue, uh, of their use of four policy, uh, and, uh. Yeah, so, thank you, uh, Lieutenant, thank you, Attorney Breck, thank you, uh, Deputy Ken, thank you for being here. And so, uh, with that being said, it is now one fifty-three and, uh. I'm adjourned in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day. God bless.
Very much.
Take care.